I declare open the 11th Emergency Special Session of the General Assembly. Announced by the Secretary-General on the convening of the Emergency Special Session has been circulated in Document A/ES-11/1. Before proceeding further, I would like to remind members of the following mitigation measures that are in place for this meeting. All delegates are required to wear a mask or a face covering at all times whilst in public space and in the General Assembly Hall except when directly addressed in the meeting. And the size of a delegation for member states, observer states and the European Union should not exceed four persons and for other observers, one person in this hall. Due to the temporary closure of the east side emergency doors in the event of a fire or an emergency which requires an evacuation, please use the west side emergency doors and the stairway next to the elevator banks. Doors in the third and the fourth balconies, please use the stairway next to the elevator banks. I now invite representatives to stand and observe one minute of silent prayer or meditation. Thank you. I should now like to draw the Assembly's attention to Rule 63, which states: "Notwithstanding the provisions of any other rule and unless the General Assembly decides otherwise, the Assembly, in case of an Emergency Special Session, shall convene in plenary meeting only and proceed directly to consider the item proposed for consideration in the request for the holding of the session." Without previous reference to the General Committee or to any other committee, the President and Vice Presidents for such Emergency Special Sessions shall be respectively the Chairman of those delegations from which were elected the President and Vice Presidents of the previous session. I shall repeat the first part of that rule: "Notwithstanding the provisions of any other rule and unless the General Assembly decides otherwise..." If there is no objection, I shall take that the General Assembly will proceed accordingly. It is so decided. Next, I should like, in keeping with established practice, to invite the attention of the General Assembly to Document A/ES-11/3 containing Article 19 of the Charter. May I take it that the Assembly duly takes note of the information contained in this document? It is so decided. In that connection, may I further take it that it is the wish of the General Assembly to follow the provisions of Resolution 76/2 of 11 October 2021, by which the Comoros, Sao Tome and Principe and Somalia are permitted to vote in the General Assembly until the end of its 76th session, and to also allow these member states to vote at the 11th Emergency Special Session. It is so decided. We shall now proceed with the appointment of the members of the Credentials Committee. Rule 28 of the Rules of Procedure provides that the General Assembly at the beginning of each session shall appoint on the proposal of the President a Credentials Committee consisting of nine members. In accordance with precedents, the Credentials Committee of the 11th Emergency Special Session should have the same membership as that of the 76th regular session of the Assembly, namely the Bahamas, Bhutan, Chile, China, Namibia, the Russian Federation, Sierra Leone, Sweden and the United States of America. If there is no objection, I shall consider the Credentials Committee constituted accordingly. It is so decided. I now invite the Assembly to turn its attention to Subitem B of Item 3 of the provisional agenda entitled "Report of the Credentials Committee." As proposed in the letter from the President of the General Assembly dated 27th February 2022, in light of the urgency of the matter to be considered, it is recommended that the Assembly accept the credentials approved for the 76th regular session for the purposes of the 11th Emergency Special Session. In this regard, I recall that the Credentials Committee of the 76th regular session accepted the credentials of the representatives of all member states at its meeting held on 1st December 2021, and the General Assembly approved the report of the Credentials Committee by its Resolution 76/15 of 6th December 2021. This would be without prejudice to the right of member states to submit separate credentials with respect to the 11th Emergency Special Session and would not set a precedent for future sessions. I hear no objection. May I take it that it is the wish of the Assembly to accept the credentials approved for the 76th regular session for the purpose of the 11th Emergency Special Session on an exceptional basis and without setting a precedent? It is so decided. We now turn to the adoption of the agenda. The provisional agenda of the 11th Emergency Special Session is contained in Document May I take it that the Assembly wishes to adopt the agenda as it appears in Document It is so decided. The Assembly will now consider Agenda Item 5 entitled, later dated 28th February 2014 from the Permanent Representative of Ukraine to the United Nations addressed to the President of the Security Council, Document S/2014/136. I will now deliver my remarks from the rostrum. His Excellency Antonio Guterres, Secretary-General of the United Nations, Excellencies, distinguished delegates. We are all gravely concerned about the fast deteriorating situation and ongoing military action in Ukraine. As I emphasized last week, the military offensive by the Russian Federation is a violation of the territorial integrity and sovereignty of Ukraine and is inconsistent with the Charter of the United Nations. Today, I renew my call for an immediate ceasefire, for all parties to exercise maximum restraint and for a full return to diplomacy and dialogue. The convening of this 11th Emergency Special Session of the General Assembly, rooted in the Charter and mandated in Resolution 377A5 entitled "Uniting for Peace," is a new opportunity to ensure that the leadership of the United Nations is up to the expectation of the people we serve on matters related to peace and security. It is imperative that we act on behalf of the women, children and men caught in the crossfire. It is imperative that we pursue all available channels to contain the situation, to de-escalate tension and to seek peaceful resolution in accordance with international law and the principles of the United Nations Charter. I welcome the announcement by the Secretary-General on Friday that 20 million from the Central Emergency Response Fund will be allocated to the humanitarian crisis in Ukraine. The humanitarian consequences on civilian population, in particular women, children, the elderly and other vulnerable groups, will be devastating. The mass exodus of refugees, including foreign nationals numbering over half a million from Ukraine to the eastern edge of the European Union, has showed no signs of stopping. Checkpoints at the borders of Poland, Hungary, Slovakia, Romania and the non-EU members Moldova have turned into choke points. I encourage member states to support humanitarian initiatives as they become available. My dear friends, there are no winners in war, but countless lives are torn apart. To that effect, security and access for humanitarian efforts must be guaranteed. Excellencies, the United Nations Charter, drafted so soon after the Second World War, is based on the principle of sovereign equality. It outlines a world where member states settle their international disputes by peaceful means without the threat or use of force. The ongoing military offensive is inconsistent with this. It is an affront to the founders of this organization and everything it stands for. The violence must stop. Humanitarian law and international humanitarian law must be respected and diplomacy and dialogue must prevail. Excellencies, my dear colleagues, in April 1946, the League of Nations dissolved, and in 26 years of the existence of an organization which ultimately had proven incapable of preventing the outbreak of the most destructive war in human history. It was the League's failure to provide a mechanism for the enforcement of the international collective security that exposed its most fatal flaws. The Right Honourable Viscount Robert Cecil, one of the original architects behind the League of Nations, in his final eulogy to the League said: "The League is dead; long live the United Nations." We are now in the 76th year of the existence of the United Nations. Let us remind ourselves that we founded the United Nations to maintain international peace and security and to that end, to take effective collective measures for the prevention and removal of threats to peace and to bring about by peaceful means and in conformity with the principles of justice and international law adjustments or settlements of international disputes or situations. Yesterday, a rare window of opportunity opened up for dialogue. As we convene here in the General Assembly, negotiators from both sides are holding talks in Belarus. This offers a ray of hope. We pray that these talks will calm down tempers and pave way to peace. Excellencies, dear colleagues, the General Assembly with its 193 member states represents the collective conscience of humanity. The strength of this Assembly is rooted in its moral authority. Let us demonstrate that moral courage and use today's debate not to whip up rhetoric, not to whip up war rhetoric, but to give peace a chance. Let us ignite the fire of love, humanity, compassion and hope. Guns are better off when noted. Let peace prevail. I thank you. I now give the floor to the Secretary-General of the United Nations, His Excellency Antonio Guterres.
Mr. President of the General Assembly, Excellencies, the fighting in Ukraine must stop. It's raging across the country from air, land and sea. It must stop now. Russian missiles and air bombardments have been pounding Ukrainian cities day and night. The capital, Kyiv, is encircled from all sides. In the face of the continuing attacks, Kyiv's 3 million residents are being forced to seek safety in their homes, improvised bomb shelters and the city's subways. The Ukrainian government has distributed a meaningful number of arms to the population with the stated objective to participate in the defense of the country. According to NHCR, half a million Ukrainians have fled across the country's borders. Although Russian strikes are reportedly largely targeting Ukrainian military facilities, we have credible accounts of residential buildings, critical civilian infrastructure and other non-military targets sustaining heavy damage. This escalating violence, which is resulting in civilian deaths, including children, is totally unacceptable. Enough is enough. Soldiers need to move back to their barracks and leaders need to move to peace. Civilians must be protected. International humanitarian and human rights law must be upheld. The sovereignty, independence and territorial integrity of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders must be respected in line with General Assembly resolutions. Mr. President, we are facing a tragedy for Ukraine but also a major regional crisis with potentially disastrous implications for us all. Yesterday, Russian nuclear forces were put on high alert. This is a chilling development. The mere idea of a nuclear conflict is simply unconceivable. Nothing can justify the use of nuclear weapons. Mr. President, we face what could easily become Europe's worst humanitarian and refugee crises in decades, with the numbers of refugees and internally displaced multiplying by the minute. I am grateful for the compassion, generosity and solidarity of Ukraine's neighbors who are taking in those seeking safety. It is important that this solidarity is extended without any discrimination based on race, religion or ethnicity. The neighboring countries will need all our support in the days and weeks to come. The United Nations will continue to assist with these efforts. Mr. President, on Saturday, I spoke with President Zelensky and assured him that the United Nations would not abandon the Ukrainian people and conveyed our determination to enhance humanitarian assistance. Even before the events of the past week, the UN was providing some 3 million people on both sides of the contact line with humanitarian assistance. The United Nations is now working 24 times 7 to assess humanitarian needs and scale up the delivery of life-saving support to many more people desperate for protection and shelter, particularly women and children, elderly people and those with disabilities. We are fully committed to staying and delivering for everyone affected by this deadly conflict across the country. Some of our personnel are expanding existing programs and others are preparing new operations to get help to those who need it fast. I want to highlight three concrete actions. First, I've allocated 20 million US dollars from the Central Emergency Respond Fund to support emergency operations along the contact line in the eastern oblasts of Donetsk and Luhansk and in other parts of the country. These will allow us to help more vulnerable people get the basics, shelter, food, water and else care as soon as possible. Second, I have appointed Amin Awad as the UN Crisis Coordinator for Ukraine. He will liaise with the government and with all relevant actors on the ground, supported by the resident humanitarian coordinator and the UN Country Team. At the same time, we are bringing together partners in and outside the country and surging personnel into the country. Third, tomorrow, we will launch two coordinated emergency appeals for Ukraine and the region, one that addresses escalating humanitarian needs inside the country, including rising internal displacement, and another that responds to the needs of people crossing international borders to seek refuge in countries neighboring Ukraine. As we ramp up our efforts, it is essential that the safety and security of UN and associated personnel in Ukraine are protected in accordance with international law and that humanitarian access to vulnerable people and communities is guaranteed. I call on all sides to uphold their obligations, allow freedom of movement of humanitarian personnel and to facilitate safe, rapid and unimpeded passage of humanitarian relief. I also urge the international community to mobilize in support of our funding appeals to address the needs of all those displaced by this crisis, as well as other vulnerable groups whose numbers will only grow as the fighting escalates. Mr. President, humanitarian aid is vital, but it is not a solution. It is simply treating the worst impacts of the conflict. The only true solution is peace. The attack on Ukraine challenges international law and the multilateral system rooted in the UN Charter. Some of the possible consequences of a worsening conflict are terrifying to contemplate. Regional tensions are rising. The latest security measures underline the high stakes for all. The economic repercussions of the crisis will have widespread impact and I count on every member state to live up to the principles of the Charter. Mr. President, the guns are talking now, but the passive dialogue must always remain open. It's never too late to engage in good-faced negotiations and to address all issues peacefully. I hope that the direct talks now taking place between Ukrainian and Russian delegations will produce not only an immediate halt to the fighting but also a path towards a diplomatic solution. I welcome and encourage all peaceful efforts to end the bloodshed and halt this conflict. I thank the countries who have offered to host and facilitate negotiations. The United Nations is ready to support such efforts. Mr. President, war is not the answer. It is death, human suffering, senseless destruction and then immense destruction and then immense destruction from the real challenges facing humanity. The climate crisis and biodiversity loss, vitally needed socio-economic recovery from the pandemic, healing the divides of race and gender and so many other pressing 21st century challenges. Humanity cannot afford to be locked in a mindset that dredges up the worst of past centuries. We need to look forward as United Nations to overcome the scourge of war. We need to focus on solving problems, not making them worse. In cities around the world, people are taking to the streets and demanding an end to war. People in Ukraine want and need peace and I believe people in the Russian Federation do too. We need peace now. Thank you.
I thank the Secretary-General for his statement. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Ukraine.
Mr. President, Secretary-General. For the first time since the United Nations was born, there is a full-fledged war in the center of Europe. Everyone in this hall and everyone in the world knows that Russia and Russia alone started this invasion now facilitated by Belarus. This war was not provoked. It was chosen by someone who is right now sitting in the bunker. We know what happened with the person who sat in the bunker in Berlin in May 1945. Before I continue with my formal statement, I would like to switch to Russian and invite you to put on the headphones. Because I would like to read from the screenshot of the smartphone of a killed Russian soldier. That's an actual screenshot from someone who is dead already. Lyshe.
Alysha, how are you doing? Why has it been so long since you responded? Are you really in training exercises? asks the mother of the killed soldier. Moments before he was killed. Mama, I'm no longer in Crimea. I'm not in training sessions. Where are you then? Papa is asking whether I can send you a parcel. What kind of a parcel, Mama, can you send me? What are you talking about? What happened? Mama, I'm in Ukraine. There is a real war raging here. I'm afraid. We are bombing all of the cities together, even targeting civilians. We were told that they would welcome us. And they are falling under our armored vehicles, throwing themselves under the wheels and not allowing us to pass. They call us fascists. Mama, this is so hard. And this was several moments before he was killed.
Imagine, if you want to just visualize the magnitude of the tragedy. You have to imagine next to you, next to every nameplate of every single country in this General Assembly, more than 30 souls of killed Russian soldiers already. Next to every name of every single country in this Assembly, 30 plus killed Russian soldiers. Hundreds of killed Ukrainians. Dozens of killed children. And it goes on and on and on. So just imagine those killed people next to you when you will listen to my formal statement. Big militarized powers seeking for geopolitical greatness has launched a full-fledged military offensive against a smaller neighbor aimed at invading the country. Deadly airstrikes dropped on civilians' heads across the entire country and the Russian troops crossed Ukraine's borders from the territory of Russia, Belarus and the occupied parts of Ukraine's Donbass and Crimea. Does it remind you of something, doesn't it? Indeed, very clear parallels could be drawn with the beginning of the Second World War too. And the Russia's course of action is very similar to what their spiritual mentors from the Third Reich employed on the Ukrainian land 80 years ago. Just one, the most recent example, example of human sufferings, example of war crime. As all of us were on our way to the General Assembly today, the Russian army shelled with Grad multiple rocket launcher systems the residential areas of the city of Kharkiv. The second biggest in Ukraine, innocent civilians have been killed and wounded. The exact numbers is very difficult to estimate because of the warfare while the negotiations are still underway at the border with Belarus. With the full express our gratitude for overwhelming support that made this decision on the Emergency Session possible. We are grateful to the President of the General Assembly for his taking care of this idea well in advance. We appreciate the engagements, engagement of the UN Secretary-General, who has taken a very strong stance in support of peace, in support of the UN Charter. who has taken a very strong stance in support of peace, in support of the UN Charter. We have been prompted to call for an emergency special session as the level of threat to the global security has been equated to that of the Second World War. Or even higher, following Putin's order to put an alert Russian nuclear forces. What a madness! If he wants to kill himself, he doesn't need to use nuclear arsenal. He has to do what the guy in Berlin did in a bunker in May 1945. The Security Council addressed the issue of the Russian war against Ukraine, and the decision was not adopted due to the obvious reason. The country adapting to occupy Ukraine since 2014 has occupied the seat of the Council's permanent member since 1991. Therefore, we do not accept the Russian logic that the Security Council was unable to act due to one-sided and unbalanced approach. The only guilty party is the Russian Federation. Distinguished delegates, Russia uses all its military potential to attack Ukraine and has begun redeploying reserve units on the border with Ukraine. It fires cruise and ballistic missiles at cities, attacks with aviation, tanks, and artillery, sensor subversion, and reconnaissance groups, which mark residential buildings in preparation for the air attacks. Russia's missiles are now aimed at destroying the infrastructure objects. They targeted the radioactive waste disposal site near Kiev, the fuel base in the town of Vasilkiv that is effectively a Kiev suburb. The objects of logistic infrastructure, including bridges, airports, and water reservoirs, remain among the targets. Such towns as Chester and Stanitsa-Lugansk near Lugansk are now nearly destroyed, as well as residential buildings in and around Kiev and Kharkiv. The Russian forces seized the Chernobyl Nuclear Power Station at the part of southern Kherson region, including the North Crimean Canal. Due to the active moving of Russian heavy militaries through the Chernobyl exclusion zone, the radiation level has increased rapidly. In the Black Sea, Russian warships deliberately attacked two civil vessels under the flags of Panama and Moldova approaching Ukraine. These constitutes a flagrant violation of the international law of the sea. Incredibly, one of the vessels had the Russian crew. Still, it was attacked by the Russians. Russians keep attacking kindergartens and orphanages, thus committing war crimes and violating the Rome Statute. Hospitals and mobile medical aid brigades are also targeted by the Russian shelling and the sabotage groups working in Ukraine's cities and towns. The Russian military fired on ambulance crews in the areas of Zaporizhzhya and Kiev. In Akhtirka district of Sumy region, Russian tanks shot down a bus with civilians. Later, the Russian military did not allow ambulances on the spot. As of today, three hundred fifty-two people, including sixteen children, were killed on the Ukrainian side, and two thousand forty Ukrainians, including forty-five children wounded during the first five days of the Russian invasion. And this number is growing nonstop. I have already told about the morning shellings in Kharkiv, and we cannot really estimate at this moment how many were killed. In response, Ukraine has activated its right for self-defense according to Article 51 of the UN Charter. The Russian troops are suffering losses: aircrafts, helicopters, tanks, trucks, personnel. The aggressor forces have already lost more than 5,000 in manpower during the first days of aggression. Excellencies, the General Assembly should be vocal in demanding from the Russian Federation to stop its offensive against Ukraine, in recognizing Russian actions as an act of aggression against a sovereign and independent state, in demanding from Russia to immediately, completely, and unconditionally withdraw its forces from the territory of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders, in demanding from the Russian Federation to reverse the decision related to the status of certain areas of Donetsk and Lugansk regions of Ukraine, in demanding full compliance with the provisions of international humanitarian law. The General Assembly should also be clear with regard to the treacherous role of Belarus and its involvement in aggression of the Russian Federation against Ukraine. Distinguished members of the General Assembly, what is happening now in Ukraine has already had the security and humanitarian implications for all of you. Immediately for Europe, a bit later for the rest, including in terms of food, security, energy security, financial markets, collapse of the economies. Last September, my president said while delivering his statement at the high-level segment of the seventy-sixth session of the General Assembly, and I quote, "I understand that criticism of the UN is often heard, but we criticize ourselves." End of quote. If we fail to respond now, we will face much more than criticism. We will face oblivion. It must not happen. Now it is time to act, time to help Ukraine that is paying now the ultimate price for freedom and security of itself and of the world. If Ukraine does not survive, international peace will not survive. If Ukraine does not survive, the United Nations will not survive. Have no illusions. If Ukraine does not survive, we cannot be surprised if democracy fails next. Now we can save Ukraine, save the United Nations, save democracy, and defend the values we believe in and that Ukrainians are fighting for and paying with their lives. The Russian delegate will speak shortly. Putin has done everything to delegitimize the Russian presence in the United Nations. But I wonder if the Russian presence in the United Nations has ever been legitimate. I wonder if ever this whole, this assembly voted in accordance with Paragraph Two of Article Four on admission of the Russian Federation to the United Nations, either in December 1991 or in January 1992 or wherever thereafter. I want to ask the delegates whose countries voted for admission of the Russian delegation to the United Nations to raise their hand to confirm that Russia was admitted to the United Nations according to the Charter. Please, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, please raise your hand if your country voted in the formal session of the General Assembly in reply to the letter by President Yeltsin dated December 24, 1991, when he told the United Nations that Russia would like to be a continiator state of the demolished Soviet Union. Anyone? Shall I put my glasses if my vision fails me and I don't see any hand raised? Any country? Anyone voted for Russian membership? I leave you with that and think about it when you listen to the Russian delegate.
I thank the distinguished representative of Ukraine. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Russian Federation.
Mr. President, Mr. Secretary-General, distinguished colleagues. In recent days, the Ukrainian issue has made headlines, global headlines, and has now been given pride of place at the UN Security Council and now the General Assembly. At the same time, Russian actions are being distorted and thwarted, and the number of incredible fakes is staggering with the use with media outlets and social networks proliferating these lies. For this reason, today I wish to focus on the real reasons for the crisis that has emerged and its possible consequences. I wish to emphasize the following: The root for the current crisis lies in the actions of Ukraine itself. For many years, it sabotaged and flouted its direct obligations under the Minsk package of measures. Just recently, very recently, there was a hope that in Kiev they would reconsider and that they would indeed comply with what they signed on to back in 2015. For that, first and foremost, what was necessary was direct dialogue as set out in the document between Donetsk and Lugansk. However, the latest confirmation from the senior leadership of the country was that Ukraine was unwilling to engage in this dialogue, and unwilling to take steps to grant special status to Donbass as set out in the Minsk agreements, and this was actively supported by the Western patrons of Kiev. And this definitively persuaded us of the fact that we no longer have a right to allow the residents of Donbass to suffer any further. Insofar as Ukrainian provocations against the people of Donbass in February did not end, in fact, they escalated. The leadership of DPR and LPR turned to us with a request to deliver military support in line with bilateral agreements on cooperation, which arrived concurrently with recognition. And this was a logical step to the ongoing, the persistent aggressive actions undertaken by the Ukrainian regime. The Ukrainian authorities, which has of late been actively armed and incited by a number of states, were under the misconception that with the indulgence of Western patrons and sponsors, they would be able to address the issues in Donbass militarily. It is difficult otherwise. It would be difficult to explain the ongoing intensification of shelling and sabotage acts on the territory of the republics which I mentioned. The people of Donbass and Lugansk continued to have to take shelter in basements. There was a flood of refugees entering the Russian Federation, and yet still, the nature of the Ukrainian armed forces operation did not change. And yet, Western partners did not turn a blind eye to this, and they merely echoed Ukrainian tall tales about the allegations that Donbass people were shelling on themselves. The worsening suffering of the residents of Donbass is something that has left Western sponsors unmoved. In recent years, this discussion at the Security Council General Assembly, there was no empathy whatsoever, no compassion for the people of Donbass and Lugansk. It seems that these four million people simply don't exist for them. And as a result, the ongoing threats targeting the people of LPR and DPR, given the lack of prospects for addressing the problems in the area under the Minsk operations due to the failure to fulfill them, the Russian president took a decision for a special military operation to be carried out in Donbass. Occupation of Ukraine is not part of these plans. The goal of the special operation is to protect the people who for eight years were subject to torment and genocide by the Kiev regime. To that end, there is a need to demilitize and denazify Ukraine. We further will strive to hold accountable those who carried out countless brutal crimes against the residents, including residents of the Russian Federation. This decision was taken in line with Article 51 of the United Nations Charter, with the sanction of the Federation Council of the Russian Federation pursuant of the Agreement on Friendship and Cooperation with DPR and LPR. I wish to recall further that the principle sovereignty and territorial integrity of states is something which we are being accused of breaching vis-à-vis Ukraine. The Declaration of Principles of International Law on Friendly Relations Between Peoples was adopted in 1970, and it needs to be instinctively complied with with respect to states, I quote, "conducting themselves in compliance with the principle of equal rights and self-determination of peoples as described above, and thus possessed of a government representing the whole people, belonging to the territory without distinction as to race, creed, or color." End of quote. Today's government of Ukraine is no such government. Moreover, during the special military operation, Russia has been exercising its right to self-defense from a regime that has been striving to gain access to nuclear weapons. The President of Ukraine explicitly stated this on 18 February during the Munich Conference. And this, I would recall, this statement that he delivered was met with applause by the participants of this conference. At the same time, Ukraine is seeking membership in NATO where there is Article Five in effect and has territorial claims to the Russian Federation. Hence, by leveraging Article 51 of the UN Charter, not only is Russia protecting itself from the nationalist threat, but Russia is also seeking to uphold the purposes and principles of the United Nations Charter on the soil of Donbass and Ukraine, ensuring that the main goal of the United Nations be upheld, namely to prevent succeeding generations from a scourge of war. Unfortunately, it behooves us to note the very negative role played in all of this by Western colleagues led by the United States. Instead of compelling Kiev to comply with its obligations, instead, they are merely inciting Kiev, egging it on, repeating the senseless mantra that their obligations in the Minsk agreements are not being complied with the Russian Federation, which I should like to recall and emphasize, the Russian Federation is not a party to it. Moreover, our Western colleagues have shamelessly inundated the country with weapons, have sent to the country instructors, and effectively incited Ukrainians who are facing a 120,000-strong military contingent, prompted them to engage in armed provocation against the Donbass. This thereby, the Western countries have created a bubble that cannot but pop. Distinguished colleagues, discussing today, in this discussion, it behooves us to note that back in 2008, Russian President of the NATO Bucharest Council cautioned that members of NATO should think three times before proudly stating that Ukraine and Georgia will join NATO. And this was portrayed as some kind of a great compromise, which was immediately met with action plans undertaken in Ukraine and Georgia to join the alliance. At the same time, in 2014, there was a brutal anti-constitutional coup which took place in Kiev, as a result of which nationalists and radicals seized power. And their policy was to create an anti-Russia in Ukraine and to ensure that it join NATO. And I will revisit that. For us, Ukraine joining NATO is a red line. First and foremost, from the military strategic level, the deployment of NATO infrastructure in that country the deployment of NATO infrastructure in that country would compel us to adopt measures in response, and this has placed us at the verge of conflict. For this reason, in December 2021, we proposed that agreements be arrived at with the US and NATO for security assurances to be provided to the Russian Federation. However, our extended hand was unceremoniously rebuffed by Americans and NATO representatives. It was proposed that we continue to discuss secondary issues without consideration of our concerns. Moreover, the question was not addressed as to how the freedom of choosing alliances as set out in the OSCE aligns with the principles of indivisibility of security, which is of great importance to us. Probably many of you wonder what should be done now and what role can the United Nations play in addressing the Ukrainian crisis. We believe that the UN can and should play its role, help to bring the stakeholders' positions closely together and to eradicate the causes of conflict. The key role here, according to the Charter, should be played by and falls with the Security Council. However, attempts to calmly discuss this issue is something our partners did not deign to undertake. For this reason, the Russian Federation on 25th February voted against the anti-Russian and anti-Ukrainian draft resolution of the Security Council. It is anti-Russian, this document. There is no need to explain why. It suffices to have a cursory glance at the document. Why is it anti-Ukrainian, the document? Because this document, beyond any doubt, is inconsistent with the root interests of the Ukrainian people insofar as it is an attempt to salvage and to cement in Ukraine those authorities who brought the country to the brink of tragedy. And this tragedy has been ongoing for eight years. Now, the main reason for our negative vote was not what was in the draft, but what was not included in the draft. If the sponsors were to attempt to make it even remotely balanced, then they would not have left out issues that need to be addressed in the context of the Ukrainian issue. Specifically, what was unaddressed was the way that the anti-constitutional coup in Ukraine, in Kiev, in February 2014, resulted in the Maidan junta seizing power and using it against the residents, shelling civilian areas with artillery pieces and multiple rocket launchers and raining bombs on the people of Donbass and Lugansk. What was unaddressed was how the Ukrainian authorities, with the tolerance and indulgence of Western sponsors, consistently and cynically shirked their obligations to implement the Minsk agreement. At the same time, at the line of contact, Ukrainian death squads, first and foremost comprised of neo-Nazi radical elements, methodically, day after day, shelled the residential areas of DPR and LPR, killing women, children, the elderly. This is ongoing today. How can we fail to mention the fact that the Ukrainian nationalists have been perpetrating crimes for all these eight years? The protesters against Maidan and Nadesa were burned alive. The peaceful protesters and the Maidan were shot out, killed by snipers. The investigation into these tragedies by the Maidan regime was deliberately swept onto the rug. At the same time, the perpetrators in the Nadesa tragedy are well-known. They are flaunting their presence, and an alternative investigation into the reasons, into the acknowledgement by the snipers, unambiguously emphasizes that the slaughter on Independence Square was a provocation by the leaders of Maidan. We specifically, last year, held an informal Security Council Aria formal meeting on this issue in order to provide colleagues at the Security Council more information about this. However, in response, at best, we heard from Western sponsors merely hackneyed cliches about Russian propaganda. What kind of a text resolution on Ukraine can there be in the above-mentioned circumstances? There is a need to ensure that the text, there was a need for the text to have a frank assessment of the role in inflating the Ukrainian crisis played by Western colleagues, who not only were present in the Minsk negotiations, but effectively gave Kiev carte blanche to carry out any actions or steps that would be unthinkable for any civilized states. With tales being spun about the triumph of democracy in Ukraine, the Maidan authorities and nationalists engaged in, with impunity, murdering political opponents, persecuting opposition, shuttering opposition television outlets where there could be some relatively objective information provided. Six of those television channels were shuttered under Zelensky alone. And how could we fail to mention the fact that the country was flooded with weapons, which were then turned on peaceful civilians in Donbass? The responsibility for what is taking place right now lies at the feet of the current Ukrainian leadership as well as our Western colleagues. Today, we wish to emphasize that this has been inflated by the lies, deceit, misinformation from the Ukrainian Armed Forces and the nationalist Western media outlets increasingly shamelessly are portraying our military operation as a negative consequence. We constantly hear lies, fakes about indiscriminate shelling of Ukrainian cities, hospitals, schools, kindergartens. The Russian army does not pose a threat to the civilians of Ukraine, is not shelling civilian areas in areas and cities where Russian Armed Forces have taken control. And these areas are seeing citizens living their lives normally, basic infrastructure, transportation, local infrastructure, and law and order is being upheld. And this includes the electrical station, the power plant, which is jointly patrolled by Russian representatives and the special Ukrainian police who are present in the area. The Chernobyl plant is also operating normally. The threat to the residents of Ukraine presently is posed by Ukrainian nationalists who have effectively taken hostage the residents of Ukraine, and they're using them, they're hiding themselves behind them and using them as human shields. There's abundant evidence from ordinary Ukrainians that nationalists, despite their protests, have been deploying heavy equipment and multiple rocket launchers in residential areas. This is an egregious violation of international humanitarian law, which needs to be duly condemned. Effectively, this is the same tactic that is being used by ISIL terrorists. All of the responsibility for the possible repercussions lies at the feet of the Maidan regime. The residents of Ukraine are also threatened by the unfettered, uncontrolled radical elements giving to all of those who wish, including criminals who have specifically been released from prison. They are now receiving weapons, and the looters and moraders and criminals are now using them to target civilians. There is sufficient and abundance of evidence of this from residents of Kiev and other cities. This demonstrates the recklessness of Ukraine authorities vis-à-vis their women. Just now, we received a letter from the Ukrainian Human Rights Civic Coordination, the Social Policy and Social Protection Institute, under the name of Irina Birezhna. For eight years, this body has been informing international structures about how the neo-Nazism was born and proliferated in Ukraine and how it has been and continues to be held at the state level. I briefly quote today: "The opiate of the recklessness and lawlessness of neo-Nazis in Ukraine was that condemned criminals have been released from prison. They have carried out grave crimes, murders, etc. Only in Kiev, those who are willing, received 25,000 machine guns without any documentation. Killings, looting, crime is ongoing. Those so-called territorial defenders of Ukraine, shot at a car, killing parents and a girl, a young girl. Two children are in hospital, critically wounded." The former acting president, following the unconstitutional coup in February 2014, Turchinov, called on all citizens who are not indifferent to slaughter Russians throughout the territory of the country. And this, despite the fact that the most recent document for Ukraine in 2019 sets out that 16, almost 17%, and actually far more, people are Russian there. Now, against the Russian Federation, in social networks, an information war has been unleashed, insofar as evidence of destruction of civilian infrastructure by Russian military does not exist. Ukrainian attacks and accidental attacks bear out the fact that Ukrainian nationalists are carrying out this violence. Social networks have training manuals about how to create fakes to taint our military operation. Throughout Ukrainian social networks, there are 1.2 million such pieces of fake news. And the correspondence that was read out by the Ukrainian ambassador, that conversation that was read out is also a part of these facts and these fakes. This is well-known. We also did not support the draft resolution for this issue to move from the Security Council and be addressed by the General Assembly Special Session. Today, we were guided by the fact that this measure proposes that we register that the Security Council failed to comply, to uphold its main responsibility for the maintenance of international peace and security. And at the same time, there was not even a hint at an attempt to find a constructive solution at the Security Council. Attempts to circumvent the position of the Russian Federation, to disregard the position of the Russian Federation, runs counter to the very bedrock of the United Nations. There is a need to find common ground, regardless of our Western partners' attempts to avoid this, including when they disregarded our legitimate concerns in connection with NATO policy and Western countries' breach of the core principles of the OSCE on indivisibility of security. To conclude, Mr. President, I wish to state that the Russian Federation did not begin these hostilities. The hostilities were unleashed by Ukraine against its own residents, the residents of Donbass, and all of those who are dissenters. Russia is seeking to end this war. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Russian Federation. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the European Union.
Mr. President, I have the honor to speak on behalf of the European Union and its member states. North Macedonia, Montenegro, Albania, Bosnia and Herzegovina, Iceland, Norway, Republic of Moldova, Georgia, San Marino, Andorra, Monaco, and Liechtenstein align themselves with this statement. Mr. President, I want to thank you for convening us here today and for the Secretary General to be here and for all of you colleagues being here. It's very important that the facts are heard and fully understood and that this body is able to take the appropriate decisions after the fact that the Security Council, thanks to the veto by one country alone, stopped this council from taking that decision. Let me start by expressing the European Union's full solidarity and support to Ukraine and its people, who are courageously fighting an unprovoked and unjustified military aggression from Russia. Since our meeting here in the General Assembly last week, the situation has dramatically escalated, despite tireless diplomatic efforts, including at the highest level. Russia has decided to turn its back to peace, to the rules-based international order as defined inter alia in the UN Charter, to diplomacy and to the international community. Russia's military attack against Ukraine has already caused an alarming number of deaths, injured, internally displaced, and refugees. We condemn, in the strongest possible terms, the unprovoked invasion of Ukraine by Armed Forces of the Russian Federation in violation of Ukraine's independence, sovereignty, and territorial integrity. We also condemn the involvement of Belarus in this aggression against Ukraine, and we call on both Russia and Belarus to abide by their international obligations. We're also alarmed by Russia's raising of the nuclear alert level. We call on Russia to de-escalate and to immediately return to the previous alert level of its nuclear arsenal and to avoid any actions that could risk the safety or security of the nuclear power plants in Ukraine, a non-nuclear weapons state under the Nuclear Nonproliferation Treaty. Russia bears full responsibility for this aggression and the resulting destruction and loss of life. We demand from Russia to cease its military operations immediately and unconditionally and to withdraw all forces and military equipment from the entire territory of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders. We further call on Russia to engage in earnest in dialogue with a view to political and diplomatic solution. Russia's actions grossly violate international law and are in clear breach of the UN Charter and the OSCE Helsinki Final Act, as well as Russia's specific commitments to respect Ukraine's sovereignty and territorial integrity under the Budapest Memorandum of 1994. This is arguably the biggest aggression in Europe since the end of the Second World War. It follows similar Russian aggression against its neighbors in 2008 and 2014. We underscore our firm support for the sovereignty and territorial integrity of Georgia and of the Republic of Moldova, and we are closely monitoring the situation in the region. This assembly has the responsibility immediately and effectively to acknowledge and address Russia's actions. Failing to do so will erode trust to the rules-based global order with the UN at its core and the UN Charter itself. It would send the wrong message to perpetrators of such aggression and aggravate similar risks to other UN member states in the region and beyond. We stand firmly by Ukraine and its people. We deplore the loss of life and human suffering. This is a dire humanitarian catastrophe, and humanitarian needs are rapidly increasing. With the toll of IDPs and refugees rising, humanitarian support is a priority in the wider package of EU support offered to Ukraine in these trying days. The UN's member states are providing urgently needed humanitarian assistance to the Ukrainian population. Ukraine has activated the Union's civil protection mechanism and is receiving urgently needed supplies from EU member states. In addition, the Republic of Moldova, to which more than 60,000 Ukrainians have fled, has requested and received EU humanitarian support in dealing with the human catastrophe caused deliberately by the Russian Federation's invasion of Ukraine. We call on Russia and Russia-backed armed formations to respect international law, including international humanitarian law. Civilians and civilian infrastructures must be protected, and humanitarian access should be secured. We call on Russia and Russia-backed armed formations to allow safe and unhindered humanitarian access and stop their disinformation campaign and cyber attacks. We strongly condemn the involvement of Belarus in this aggression against Ukraine and call on it to immediately stop action and to abide by its international obligations. We call our unwavering support for the independence, sovereignty, and territorial integrity of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders, and we call on all UN members not to recognize the two self-proclaimed separatist entities. The EU has reacted swiftly and decisively to Russia's recognition of Ukraine's self-proclaimed separatist entities and the invasion of Ukraine by adopting restrictive measures. We intend to take such measures against Belarus. Mr. President, let us be clear on this. We firmly believe that the use of force and coercion to change borders has no place in the 21st century. Let us recall that the UN Charter prohibits both the threat and the use of force against the territorial integrity or political independence of any state or in any other manner inconsistent with the purposes of the United Nations. Tensions and conflict should be resolved through dialogue and diplomacy. The EU, together with like-minded partners, have been united in making unprecedented efforts to achieve a diplomatic solution. But Russia has not reciprocated these efforts and instead opted unilaterally for a grave and premeditated escalation. With this one-sided step, Russia is further isolating itself. We are today at a crucial and historical moment. Too many times in the past, the international community has been blind or too slow in front of unfolding tragedies. Entire generations in many places around the world, many of you representing them, have paid and are still paying the price of inaction. We cannot make the same mistake again. We have to take action. After Russia's veto in the Security Council last week, the General Assembly has the responsibility to send a strong and united message on the need for Russia to immediately and unconditionally cease its military operations, withdraw its troops, and opt for genuine dialogue. We call on Russia to avoid, in particular, any action that places the safety and security of Ukraine's nuclear and radioactive waste installations at risk. The people of Ukraine and the whole world are watching us and counting on us and will judge us on the decisions that we will take here in this special. judge us on the decisions that we will take here in this special emergency session. And it's our duty and responsibility for all of us to do our utmost to defend the UN Charter and the international order. We therefore hope that this assembly will massively support the resolution tabled by Ukraine and its partners. The EU and its member states will continue to do their utmost to protect the integrity of the rules-based international system, which is key to our collective security, and we call on all UN member states to do the same. On our side, we will continue to stand by Ukraine, support its democratically elected institutions and representatives and its people, including through additional political, financial, humanitarian, and logistical support. I thank you very much, colleagues. I thank you very much, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of the European Union. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Denmark on behalf of the Nordic Baltic countries.
I have the honor to speak on behalf of the eight Nordic Baltic countries: Estonia, Finland, Iceland, Latvia, Lithuania, Norway, Sweden, and my own country, Denmark. Mr. President, on the night of 24th February, the Russian leadership decided to attack Ukraine. Let me be clear: we condemn, in the strongest terms possible, the invasion of Ukraine by the Russian Federation. People around the world are watching with horror the tragedy unfolding in Ukraine, a member state of this organization, a member of this community of nations. We are struck with a profound sense of injustice and a profound sympathy with the Ukrainian people who are fighting for their country, their cities, their homes, their families, their lives, their freedom, and their future. The Russian leadership's aggression and brutal armed attack is in clear violation of Ukraine's sovereignty and territorial integrity within its internationally recognized borders. The Russian leadership's actions gravely violate international law and the principles of the UN Charter. They are an attack on this organization, and this cannot stand. Last week, the Russian leadership decided it would erase Ukraine's right to determine its own future. This cannot stand. Mr. President, Russia counted on the world to remain silent, but we are acting. And on this day, and until peace prevails and every Ukrainian can safely return to their homes, we stand with Ukraine. The devastating consequences of this aggression, not only for Europe but globally, cannot be overstated. Russian aggression against Ukraine will have global and long-term negative consequences, challenging the rules-based international order if we let it go unanswered. In the time ahead, we fear increased suffering, with potentially a large number of casualties and extensive destruction of civilian infrastructure. We see fighting unfolding in and around urban areas, and we are deeply concerned about the long-term cumulative and protracted harm to the civilian population. Mr. President, we will continue to look at every single instrument in our toolbox as a matter of urgency. Sanctions have already been enacted to cripple Putin's ability to finance this war machine. And likewise, the role of the Lukashenko regime and Belarus in enabling the attack on Ukraine also demands a firm response. Nordic Baltic countries have been delivering financial, humanitarian, and military assistance to the people of Ukraine, and many of our partners and friends around the globe have joined us. Every nation must look at how to further support Ukraine. Mr. President, during the days we have watched with horror broadcasted images of families separated, children sheltering in the safety of the Kiev subway system, kindergartens destroyed by Russian ordinances, and the ruins of bombarded residential buildings in the center of the capital of Ukraine. We are outraged by indiscriminate attacks on civilians in this unlawful and immoral war of conquest that serves no purpose and no principle but the naked quest for power and territory. This cannot stand. Russia must respect international humanitarian law and human rights law. Full and unhindered humanitarian access must be guaranteed. Civilians must be protected. We call on Russia to stop this senseless war, and we echo the plea of the Secretary-General. We demand an immediate ceasefire, and we urge Russia to withdraw all its forces from Ukraine and return genuinely to the path of dialogue and negotiation. Mr. President, let me be clear: every civilian death, every war crime will be recorded, and we will ensure that the perpetrators of these heinous crimes are held accountable and brought to justice. History has its eyes on us. Every legal avenue available will be used to hold the aggressor to account. Ukraine has sent a request to the International Court of Justice on Russia's erroneous and absurd allegations of genocide in Ukraine, which the Russian Federation has cynically used as a false pretext for its invasion. The International Criminal Court's prosecutor has also noted that he is monitoring Russia's invasion of Ukraine and has jurisdiction to prosecute war crimes and crimes against humanity. The prosecutor's office may and will exercise its jurisdiction over and investigate any act of genocide, crimes against humanity, or war crime committed within the territory of Ukraine, as Ukraine has accepted the court's jurisdiction. We fully support the ICC's monitoring of the situation. Colleagues, the rules-based international order, which governs how states interact with one another, was put in place drawing from the horrible lessons of two world wars, promising one another that future generations would be saved from the scourge of war. The attack on Ukraine, the Russian invasion of Ukraine, is a direct assault on the principles and purposes of the UN Charter. This cannot stand. The matter is now in the hands of the General Assembly, where one veto cannot overrule the UN membership, where the power and legitimacy is manifested in numbers. Russia's shameful use of the veto on a matter it bears full responsibility for is completely unacceptable. As a permanent member of the Security Council, Russia has a special responsibility for maintaining peace and security, not to violate the very principles of the UN Charter. The latest meetings of the Council demonstrated the need for reform. It demonstrated who had the firmness and valor to defend the UN Charter. No country can grow and thrive in isolation. Russia knows this. The General Assembly has the power to send a firm message to Putin, and what we say today and how we vote on the resolution presented will make a difference on the ground in Ukraine and to the Ukrainian people. They will be watching us, hoping that the world will come in on the side of the UN Charter and our promise of never again. Colleagues, Russia's unlawful and brutal armed attack on Ukraine will affect and impact everyone. And if we do not join our forces to turn back this tide today, we will be even less equipped to deal with similar crises and crimes in the future, wherever, on whichever continent they occur. Over the last week, we have heard powerful statements from representatives of every continent on this planet, from Africa to Asia, from Europe to the Americas, that Russia's behavior towards a fellow member of the United Nations cannot stand, and we will hear more today. And to those who still refer to two parties to a conflict, we echo the words of a protester who had written on her sign: "If Russia stops fighting, there will be no more war. If Ukrainians stop fighting, there will be no more Ukraine." That is the simple reality before us. That is the simple truth. The world will hold Russia and Belarus accountable for their actions, Russia as the main aggressor, Belarus as the enabler. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Denmark. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of France.
Mr. President, Russia, day by day, is continuing its work of destruction in Ukraine. And on top of these brutal and criminal acts, we see a dangerous rhetoric which is further stoking tension. Russia is conducting this armed aggression in violation of the most fundamental principles of the United Nations Charter, which all members of this assembly have the obligation to respect. On Friday, it was the only one to oppose a Security Council resolution co-sponsored by 82 states. The General Assembly today has a historic responsibility, that of relaying loudly and robustly the voice of citizens who, across all continents, including in Russia, are asking for the immediate cessation of this war and for the withdrawal of the Russian army from Ukrainian territory. France supports the efforts underway within this assembly to prepare a resolution demanding that Russia put an end to its aggression and respect the sovereignty and territorial integrity of Ukraine. We call for all members of this assembly to vote in favor of this text. Over and above Ukraine, it is an issue of defending the Charter and the very reason for the existence of the United Nations. Let's be clear about this. Faced with the armed aggression against a people, faced with the civilian victims increasing in number every day, faced with the outflows of those who are forced to seek refuge, no one can avert their gaze. Abstention is not an option. Abstaining is to agree that might is right. We call upon all member states to vote in favor of the primacy of law over force. Mr. President, the invocation of this emergency special session does not mean that the Security Council is refusing to exercise its responsibilities. The Council will be meeting this afternoon to discuss the humanitarian situation in Ukraine. France, together with Mexico, will be tabling a draft resolution in order to guarantee the protection of civilians and safe and unhindered humanitarian access in order to respond to the urgent needs of the Ukrainian population. France and its partners in the European Union stand firmly, shoulder to shoulder, with the Ukrainian people. The European Union has already announced 90 million euros of humanitarian aid. France will also play its part. With our partners, France is mobilized to ensure that the international response is able to confront the aggression committed by Russia. The European Union and France is president for the first six months of this year, has adopted measures to block access of the Russian Central Bank to its reserves. We've also announced the funding of defensive equipment for Ukraine. Mr. President, France salutes the courage being shown by the people of Ukraine. We call upon this assembly to express to them without delay our support through the adoption of a resolution. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of France. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the United Kingdom.
Mr. Secretary-General, Mr. President, colleagues. On Friday, 81 member states supported a resolution in the Security Council to stop the war in Ukraine. Russia was completely isolated in opposing that resolution. Today, we gather in the General Assembly to stand against Russia's illegal attack on Ukraine and its assault on the principles of the UN Charter. The facts are clear. Russia has invaded Ukraine without provocation and without justification. Russia has rained missiles and rockets down on Kyiv, Kharkiv, Odessa, and other cities. The brave men and women of Ukraine are enduring the barrage and have held their cities from Russian invaders. They are fighting for their country, for their continued future as a free and independent But the humanitarian consequences are already immense. We hear of babies born in air raid shelters, children with bomb craters in their kindergartens, and today, news of the shelling of residential areas in Kharkiv. These are indiscriminate attacks on Ukrainian civilians. Seven million Ukrainians are displaced. In short, the scourge of war that our United Nations was created to prevent has been unleashed by Russia on Ukraine. The international response to Russia's aggression has been united and swift. Around the world and here in this building, we must stand together to defend the rules and enforce the accountability that we have built together. If we do not stand up for them now, then the safety of every nation's borders and independence are at risk. That is why we also condemn Belarusian support for Russia's invasion of Ukraine. As the Secretary-General said last week, Russia's actions are violations of the territorial integrity and sovereignty of Ukraine and conflict directly with the principles of the Charter of the United Nations. And as he said today, the only answer is peace. So our message today is simple. We offer our unequivocal support for Ukraine and the Ukrainian people. We call on President Putin to stop this senseless war, and we urge all fellow members of the United Nations to speak up for Ukraine and to defend the Charter. Slava Ukraini!
I thank the distinguished representative of the United Kingdom. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Georgia.
Thank you, Mr. President. My delegation aligns itself with the statement delivered by the representative of the European Union, and in my national capacity, I would like to add the following comment. Excellences. We have gathered today in an emergency session because the Security Council once again failed as enacting as a guardian of peace and security. So now it is upon us, the General Assembly, where we all have equal rights to vote, to stand up and make it certain that the United Nations delivers on the purpose it was created for. The use of armed force by a UN member against sovereignty, territorial integrity, or political independence of another member state violates Article 2.4 of the UN Charter and constitutes an act of aggression as defined by the Resolution 3314 of this very body adopted by consensus. What we see in Ukraine is an act of aggression. What we see in Ukraine is an act of aggression on the part of Russia, and we condemn it. Last week, I spoke from this very rostrum about Russia's pattern of behavior against its neighbors. Russia's full-scale military aggression against my country should have served as a wake-up call for all, but alas, it has not been possible to prevent the similar scenario unfolding few years later in Ukraine. Not to repeat myself, let me just say that we in Georgia do know what the toll of war is. We do know what is these disastrous consequences, and that is people, innocent civilians, women and children, who pay the highest price. It is devastating not only for those who live through it, but passes down to generations. Let me be clear. Core principles enshrined in the UN Charter, the Helsinki Final Act, the Charter of Paris for New Europe, and the commitments taken under the Budapest Memorandum are non-negotiable nor subject to revision by any country, no matter how large or powerful it may be. Territorial acquisition through use of force or a threat to do so is illegal and impermissible. Georgia calls on the Russian Federation to immediately cease its military activities and withdraw all its forces and armaments from Ukraine, allow immediate access to all international humanitarian and human rights mechanisms wherever it is, the entire territory of Ukraine, reverse the decisions related to the status of integral parts of Ukraine's Donetsk and Luhansk regions and Crimea, and to do so the same with regard to Georgia. Withdraw forces, allow humanitarian access, reverse the status-related decision with regard to the occupied territories. Georgia was among the co-sponsors of the draft Security Council resolution that got vetoed, and we are the co-sponsors of the draft General Assembly resolution that is soon to be considered. This resolution, although it concerns Ukraine, is a watershed moment for all of us, and I would dare say for the future of the rules-based order and our United Nations. So I call on you to vote in favor of the proposed draft, to vote to save the succeeding generations from the scourge of war, to vote for the United Nations. And in conclusion, we welcome the Secretary-General's decision to scale up the United Nations humanitarian operations in around Ukraine, and let me once again reiterate Georgia's unwavering support of independence, sovereignty, and territorial integrity of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders, including Crimea and Donbass, and Ukraine's navigational rights in its territorial waters. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Georgia. And now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Poland.
Mr. President, Mr. Secretary-General, distinguished delegates. Poland fully supports the resolution just tabled by Ukraine and calls on each member state to stand firmly behind it. We deeply believe that through this act, we will demonstrate our adherence to the principles enshrined in the UN Charter. Only by upholding those fundamental principles, we can see the truly peaceful and long-term solution to the conflict caused by the Russian aggression in Ukraine. In that sense, the resolution we are about to vote paves the way to a meaningful diplomatic effort to end the atrocities of this war. To achieve peace, Poland, as a current chairmanship in office of the Organization of Security and Cooperation Europe, called yesterday for the immediate ceasefire in Ukraine to let humanitarian organizations deliver assistance. But these appeals for peace are even more urgent when you look at the events in Ukraine from a close-distance perspective. Let me tell you how we Poles see and respond to the horrors of this war as neighbors and friends of Ukraine. There is no doubt that we are confronted with one of the biggest humanitarian crises in Europe since World War II. In the first three days of Russian aggression facilitated by the complicity of the Belarusian regime of Alexander Lukashenko, we witnessed almost more than five hundred thousand people fleeing Ukraine, three hundred thousand of which found refuge in my home country. We keep our borders open. Our diplomatic missions help those who seek refuge in Poland. The nationals of all countries who suffered from Russian aggression or whose life is at risk can seek shelter in my country. And I can tell you, only for the first half of today, we welcome people of one hundred fifty, one hundred twenty-five nationalities fleeing Ukraine to Poland. So that means it concerns us all. The list of these nationalities are too long to read to you, so I just read the first those with more than one hundred nationals fleeing to Poland only today in the morning. Ukraine, Uzbekistan, Nigeria, India, Morocco, Kazakhstan, Pakistan, Afghanistan, Poland, Belarus, Iran, Turkey, Algeria, and Russia. This refuge applies also to the students, which I understand is a serious concern of some colleagues here in the chamber. The students are also welcome to Poland and they are offered to continue their studies in Poland. We know that some of the missions here in New York were targeted by the disinformation suggesting discriminatory practices at the Polish-Ukrainian border based on race and religion. I can tell you this is a complete lie and a terrible insult to us. Besides giving refuge, Poland delivers to those who suffer a very practical and tangible help. My government organized a special trains for the elderly and mothers with small babies as well as convoys with supplies and medical aid. There are seven thousand beds in twenty hospitals ready for those wounded and sick, and I want to announce that the first Ukrainian refugee babies were born in Poland in the first twenty, in the last twenty-four hours, and the first lifesaving operations were carried out for the elderly in our hospitals. Poland stands ready to cooperate closely with UN OCHA, International Committee of the Red Cross, and other humanitarian organizations to ease the burden of the civilians targeted by the Russian aggression. But what I am most proud of is the output of spontaneous readiness to help by individuals. Polish families are opening their homes to refugees. They offer close food and accommodation. Thousands of private cars are coming from all over Poland to pick up those who cross the border. On the first two days, we experienced a long traffic jams because of the number of cars coming from all corners of Poland. Polish people stand in lines for hours to donate blood for Ukraine. The scale of help was offered was so big that the government opened a special website, Helping Ukraine, where volunteers can register and get guidance on those in need. While diplomats in my mission are fulfilling our diplomatic duties here in New York, our family members and friends are welcoming refugees coming directly from the war zone. In this conflict, Poland may not be a geopolitical superpower, but we want to be a solidarity superpower, and this is how we want to change the grim reality for better. At the same time, I would like to pay a tribute to those Ukrainians who defend their motherland and continue to stand for their country's freedom. Those are not only soldiers, but also people like Vaselina, a thirty-year-old mother of a small, of two small daughters, living in a village near the Polish-Ukrainian border. When offered a trip to Poland by my family, she answered, "I cannot leave Ukraine now. This is my country. I have to stay and take care of it." And now she is cooking food for soldiers and refugees at the border. A similar answer was given by our diplomats in Ukraine. We keep our embassies and consulates open, and they keep fulfilling their diplomatic and constitutional duties. Let me share with you, colleagues, the message to you I received today in the morning from our ambassador Bartosz Chicholski in Kyiv. I quote, "I am the Polish ambassador to Ukraine. I work in Kyiv, a city the size of Berlin inhabited by over four million people. From Thursday morning, I have to hide from the bombing in my basement several times a day. I wake to exchanges of machine gun fire. Windows are shaking from the missile detonations. I am convinced that right now, when you are deciding in New York, hundreds of thousands of terrified residents of Kharkiv, Dnipro, Zhitomir, Myriupol, Lviv, and Kyiv look at you with hope and faith in the power of international law." End of quote. And I wish to conclude by a reference to the warning expressed by a nineteenth-century Russian novelist, Fyodor Dostoevsky, in his book with a meaningful title, Crime and Punishment. The message of the book is following. When someone, just like Raskolnikov, thinks he is exceptional and free from moral obligations and therefore feels entitled to committing a crime of murder, in the end, he faces the punishment from the crime itself. Because committing a crime is already one's biggest punishment. There is no crime without the punishment. Thank you very much.
I thank the distinguished representative of Poland. And now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Austria.
Thank you, Mr. President. And as usual, Austria aligns itself with the statement by the European Union. However, we also want to add our voice in our national capacity because what is currently being deliberately inflicted upon Ukraine does not allow us to remain silent. Excellencies, colleagues, fellow Ukrainians, let me start by thanking you, Mr. Secretary-General, for your clear words this morning and these past days. We are grateful to see that the United Nations is there to help those suffering and in dire need for help. We meet here today to discuss the Russian aggression against Ukraine, to discuss the violation of Article 2.4 of our UN Charter. That we meet here today in this room is a good thing and a bad thing. It's bad because it means, after several days since Russia launched its aggression against the sovereign territory of Ukraine, we are still witnessing military attacks, terrible human suffering, and loss of life. It's also bad because questions of peace and security should be addressed by the Security Council. As primary responsible for upholding international peace and security, the Security Council cannot remain silent when basic principles of our international rules-based order are trampled by military boots and squashed by tanks. Last Friday, however, the Security Council decision was blocked by the veto of a permanent member, the Russian Federation, even though eighty-one members of the international community supported the draft resolution of the coal pen holders. Yes, the veto power is foreseen in the UN Charter, but so is the obligation to uphold UN principles. If in the twenty-first century, the Security Council is blocked in a situation that constitutes a blatant breach of international law, we should ask ourselves if this system of veto powers is still able to regulate our international relations. Yet, colleagues, our meeting here today is also good. It's good that the General Assembly is there to step in if the Security Council cannot fulfill its mandate, and it's good that we now have the opportunity here in this General Assembly Hall to raise our voices, to recall the principles of the UN Charter, our Charter, and to state clearly that we will not stay silent if the Charter is violated in the most serious way. This is our right. This is our obligation as members of the organization. Colleagues, at the end of this debate, we will vote on a resolution condemning the aggression of Russia against Ukraine and showing solidarity with the people of Ukraine. Austria will vote yes on the resolution and urges all of you to do so also. By voting yes, we show the world that the UN is able to take its responsibility to defend the rule of law, international law, and the UN Charter. By voting yes, we show that these acts and similar horrifying acts are not tolerated by the international community, and most importantly, by voting yes, we show the Ukrainian people that they are not alone. I know that for many of us, such votes can be difficult. Some say this is a regional issue, a European problem. Colleagues, an attack against one of our members, one of members of this organization, is an attack on us all. In our interconnected world, our world is one region. Cyber weapons strike everywhere. Missiles have global reach. The world is not only regional, it has become local. Some say we must respect security concerns. Yes, colleagues, we must. Everyone has security concerns. Ukraine had them and gave up nuclear weapons and trusted that others would not harm them. But clearly, if you have security concerns, solve them with dialogue, not tanks. If a country with one of the largest armies and nuclear arsenals feels insecure, it should seek cooperation, dialogue, disarmament, and not force against others. Some say, "Well, well, look at others, look at these other instances that we have had. What about past violations?" Colleagues, we know this "what about"ism well, trying to justify evil with past evil, trying to excuse yourself by pointing to the faults of others. But just because we did not stand up in the past to injustice and evil, that should not prevent us from standing up now. Yes, it's true, others have committed aggressions, crimes, and faults. Yes, the international community has sometimes shown a lack of unity to act, and yes, the international community has sometimes been too hesitant. But let us not continue to make that same mistake now. Let us start a new era when we work together and stand up united for our common principles. Let's defend the rule of law, let's not give in to the reign of the powerful. Let us vote yes on that resolution. Mr. President, Austria is not part of any military alliance. We rely for our security on the respect and implementation of international law, of treaties, of custom, including humanitarian law. Reports about Russian attacks on civilians and civilian objects in urban areas are extremely worrying. Rockets or missiles hitting apartment buildings in Kiev cannot be accepted. These attacks constitute war crimes under international humanitarian law. We urge Russia to strictly adhere to international humanitarian law, in particular regarding the protection of civilians in urban warfare, and immediately cease these attacks and refrain from using explosive weapons in populated areas. We strongly condemn the use of cluster munitions, which is incompatible with international humanitarian law and outlawed under the Convention on Cluster Munitions. And colleagues, the threat of use of nuclear weapons, any nuclear threat of this kind is a violation of the principles of the UN Charter. The implied catastrophic humanitarian consequences do not respect borders and pose a threat to all of humanity. This is completely unacceptable. Perpetrators and those responsible ordering these crimes need to be held accountable. The International Criminal Court may exercise jurisdiction over and investigate any acts of genocide, crime against humanity, or war crimes committed within the territory of Ukraine. In this regard, we welcome the statement of ICC prosecutor Khan, reminding us all that his office can reminding us all that his office can exercise jurisdiction over and investigate any act of genocide, crime against humanity or war crime committed within the territory of Ukraine since February 2014. Mr. President, in the last couple of days, Ukrainians have endured incredible human suffering. In order to help ease the humanitarian catastrophe, Austria contributed 2.5 million euros to the ICRC and NGOs. And additional humanitarian assistance will be decided soon. Those organizations' valuable work must be ensured by guaranteeing humanitarian access. Colleagues, in sum, Austria condemns the Russian aggression against Ukraine. Austria calls on Russia to reverse its decision to recognize the self-proclaimed Donetsk and Luhansk People's Republics, which represents a grave violation of the sovereignty and territorial integrity of Ukraine. Austria urges Russia to immediately withdraw its troops and stop any further bloodshed and return to the path of peaceful dialogue, like any member of the UN is obliged to do. Vienna is ready to host and facilitate such dialogue. We hope that today's start of bilateral discussions between delegations from Ukraine and Russia can serve as a first step towards an urgently needed ceasefire. And colleagues, we call on you to vote yes on today's resolution. I know it's not always easy. Many of us have good relations with Russia. We love the culture, admire the traditions, and have good Russians friends. But a good friend, an honest friend, will speak up and say what needs to be said to do and what needs to be done when a friend commits an illegal, an evil act. This is what this resolution is for. Imagine for one moment that you are in Ukraine's shoes. What would you expect from the UN, from this General Assembly, if you were in Ukraine's place? In this dark hour, it is our moral, our legal obligation to condemn the violations of the Charter and show solidarity with the victim of an aggression. Austria will show its full solidarity with Ukraine, the Ukrainian government, Ukrainian people. We stand with you. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Austria. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Czech Republic.
Mr. President, Mr. Secretary General, excellencies. The Czech Republic aligns itself with the EU statement and wishes to add the following in its national capacity. Let me begin with the most important words I can say here today. We urge Russia to stop immediately its military actions and to unconditionally withdraw all its forces and military equipment from the entire territory of Ukraine. We are meeting here today at a critical moment, not just for Ukraine or Europe, but for the United Nations as a whole. A permanent member of the UN Security Council has started a war of aggression against a fellow UN member state. It is a blatant violation of international law. It is a flagrant violation of the UN Charter and its principles, which all we should uphold and abide by. This seminal document was written with the express purpose of averting the scourge of war. Russian President Putin chose to reject diplomacy and multiple offers for talks. Instead, he decided to launch a savage conquest, inflicting untold pain and suffering on the people of Ukraine. There are horrific reports coming from Ukraine. Civilians, including children, being killed in their hometowns. Families separated. Hundreds of thousands of people forced to flee for their lives. Mr. President, let me make it crystal clear: Russia and its people are under no threat from Ukraine or NATO. We condemn, in the strongest terms, Mr. Putin's threat of using nuclear weapons. Indeed, it is a very dangerous rhetoric and only further exacerbates the overall security situation. Nothing can justify the use of nuclear weapons. Mr. President, Russia must be held accountable for its aggressive actions. Ukraine has accepted the jurisdiction of the International Criminal Court related to genocide, crimes against humanity, and war crimes. We will be looking to the ICC to prioritize investigations of crimes committed in Ukraine. Similarly, we strongly support Ukraine's filing of a case against Russia at the International Court of Justice, requesting the ICG to order Russia to cease its unlawful attack on Ukraine and to stop Russia's false claims that acts of genocide have been perpetrated in the Luhansk and Donetsk oblasts of Ukraine. Mr. President, I would like to reiterate my country's unwavering support for the sovereignty, territorial integrity, and independence of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders, including the illegally annexed Crimea. This is why the Czech Republic throws its full support behind the draft UN General Assembly resolution. The people of the Czech Republic stand firmly with Ukraine. Suffering of innocent civilians in Ukraine has raised a huge wave of solidarity among our people. Humanitarian aid is pouring across the border and to border regions where Ukrainians are fleeing in a desperate search for safety. The Czech government, local communities, as well as individuals, have offered and provided help to the people who have fled from the suffering caused by the Russian aggression. And we will continue to do so. Mr. President, we deeply regret the use of a veto by the Russian representative last Friday to block the UN Security Council resolution. This prevented the UN Security Council from fulfilling its fundamental role to maintain international peace and security. It is yet another proof of Russia's blatant disrespect for this organization. However, the large number of cosponsors of the draft resolution clearly demonstrated the prevailing opinion of the international community. Mr. President, Russia cannot veto the reality on the ground. And let me here echo the words of the UN Secretary General speaking after last Friday's vote in the Security Council. The United Nations was born out of war to end war. Today, that objective was not achieved. We must never give up. We must give peace another chance. Dear colleagues, we, the representatives of 193 nations gathered here at this emergency special session of the UN General Assembly, have a solemn duty to uphold the purpose and basic principles of the UN Charter and international law as we are about to take a vote on a draft resolution which is soon to be formally introduced. Dear colleagues, soon, each and every member of this honorable body will have a chance to declare where they stand on the UN Charter and international law. And quite frankly, on the most crucial matter of war and peace. Excellencies, colleagues, I'm making a plea to each and every one of you representing here all UN member states. Please, vote for this resolution. Vote with your conscience. Vote for the end of bloodshed and human suffering. Vote for peace. Vote for the UN Charter and international law. Vote for all the good our United Nations was founded to represent. And please let us not forget, the whole world is watching. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Czech Republic. And now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Switzerland.
Monsieur le Président.
Mr. President, Secretary General, dear colleagues. As Doug Hammersholt clearly stated, the United Nations were not created to take us to heaven, but to save us from hell. And yet, what the population in Ukraine is experiencing in recent days looks very much like what we have pledged to avoid. This is why this assembly is meeting today in the face of a war that has already cost many lives. Each life lost is one too many. Our thoughts are with the victims and with their families. We express our solidarity with the Ukrainian people and their democratically elected authorities. We are deeply concerned about the humanitarian situation and the displacement of hundreds of thousands of people. This assembly is meeting today at the request of the Security Council due to the lack of consensus among its permanent members. Switzerland supported the draft resolution in the Security Council aimed at ending the hostilities and restoring international law. The blocking of this resolution by the veto of a permanent member is contrary to Article 27 of the Charter. The Russian Federation, as a party to the conflict, should have abstained from voting. We fully support the draft resolution of the General Assembly and we call upon member states to do the same. Switzerland strongly condemns Russia's attack on Ukraine. We are also concerned about the use of Belarus territory for this military operation. Russian attempts to legitimize its action are not credible. There was no provocation to justify such an attack. We call upon Russia and upon all nuclear weapon states to refrain from any threat to use these weapons and certainly from using them. Russia has just joined a declaration of the P5, which reaffirmed that a nuclear war cannot be won and must never be fought. Switzerland reiterates its full support for the independence, sovereignty, and territorial integrity of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders. Switzerland once again calls on all parties to respect international humanitarian law and human rights. We condemn all violations. This also applies to cyberspace. The protection of the civilian population, as well as of persons who are not part of the fighting, must be the priority. Switzerland is deeply concerned about substantiated allegations of the use of cluster munitions. Assets essential to the survival of the civilian population, as well as civilian and medical infrastructure, must not be targeted. Furthermore, we call on the parties to ensure rapid and unhindered humanitarian access and the safety of humanitarian and medical personnel. Switzerland stands in solidarity. We are committed to mobilizing additional resources to meet humanitarian needs in Ukraine and in the region. Together with our European partners, we will continue our long tradition of welcoming refugees. Moreover, Switzerland has fully implemented the European Union sanctions against Russia. We welcome the work of the Special Monitoring Mission of the Organization for Security and Cooperation in Europe. We regret that the serious situation has left the organization with no other choice than to temporarily evacuate its staff. Switzerland welcomes the UN Secretary General's offer of good offices, as well as the diplomatic efforts of the member states, which have left no stone unturned in order to promote a diplomatic solution through dialogue. Switzerland reiterates its offer of good offices if the parties to the conflict so wish. We welcome the fact that the parties to the conflict have met today for initial negotiations. We very much hope, as the Secretary General does so keenly, that these talks will lead to initial results, such as, for example, a ceasefire. This conflict, like all conflicts, can only be solved through dialogue. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Switzerland. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of New Zealand.
Mr. President, Mr. Secretary General. Today, our thoughts are with the people of Ukraine as they continue to fight Russia's large-scale invasion. Innocent lives lost. Everyday lives in turmoil. Young and old lives that will never be the same as innocent people suddenly find themselves as refugees. The worst part of the trauma we see unfolding in front of us is knowing that it was completely avoidable. New Zealand is in no doubt that the conflict in Ukraine is a direct result of the unprovoked and unjustified actions of Russia and its decision to flagrantly ignore international law. Russia is escalating its aggression by its decision to increase the readiness of its nuclear weapons. Russia's actions are nothing short of the acts of a bully. New Zealand supports the Secretary General's assessment that these acts represent a clear violation of the territorial integrity and sovereignty of Ukraine and are inconsistent with the principles of the Charter of the United Nations. In standing in support of Ukraine, we are also standing in defense of the UN Charter. We cannot pick and choose when to espouse the centrality of the Charter. This emergency session of the General Assembly is taking place as a direct result of Russia's actions alone. Its ongoing military aggression threatens not only the peace and security of Ukraine, but that of Europe and of the international community. We are here today because the United Nations Security Council failed to act last Friday to condemn Russia's actions to invade Ukraine. Russia's use of the veto, when it is not only party to this conflict, but the direct cause of it, is a disgrace. New Zealand, along with a group of small states, opposed the granting of the veto to the P5. We have continued to oppose the veto since its inception. And we remain strong in our conviction that there is no place for the veto in the UN Security Council. With the Security Council having failed to deliver against its responsibilities, we, the General Assembly, must now stand up to play our part. New Zealand is a primary cosponsor of the General Assembly resolution, and we encourage all member states to vote in favor of the resolution. In support of Ukraine, in support of international peace and security, and in support of our treasured UN Charter. New Zealand has consistently expressed our strong support for international efforts to de-escalate the Ukraine crisis diplomatically. Having turned away from diplomacy, Russia must now face the consequences of that decision. New Zealand has joined other member states in implementing measures to respond to Russia's actions, including introducing targeted travel bans against Russian government officials and other individuals associated with the Russian invasion of Ukraine, and prohibiting the export of goods to Russian military and security forces. Our thoughts today must be with the people of Ukraine, who are now facing a humanitarian crisis caused by the conflict. We echo the President of the General Assembly's call that all member states must uphold their obligations under international humanitarian law. Further, we, the international community, must act now to prevent further pointless loss of innocent life and to support those who now find themselves displaced through no fault of their own. We commend Ukraine's neighbors for their selfless acts of taking in large numbers of Ukrainians and other nationalities who seek refuge from this conflict. We acknowledge with a grim sense of horror, but sadly, little surprise, the role of accomplice and facilitator that Belarus has played in support of Russia's invasion. New Zealand has also extended its travel bans to key members of the Belarusian government. New Zealand is contributing financially to the humanitarian response and will consider all humanitarian options available to support the international humanitarian response. We welcome France and Mexico's tabling of a humanitarian resolution in the United Nations Security Council today. Finally, Aotearoa, New Zealand, is a proponent of peace and reconciliation. In this vein, we say to Russia, act consistently with your international obligations. Cease military operations in Ukraine. Permanently withdraw to avoid a catastrophic and pointless loss of innocent life. Take all possible steps to protect civilians in line with international humanitarian law and return to diplomatic negotiations as a pathway to resolve this conflict. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of New Zealand. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Panama, on behalf of the Alliance for Development in Democracy.
Mister President, Secretary-General. The Republic of Panama, on behalf of the Republic of Costa Rica, the Dominican Republic, as member countries of the Alliance for Development in Democracy, are honored to address this eleventh emergency special session in order to express our position during the convening of this session on the draft resolution on the unprovoked armed aggression by the Russian Federation against Ukraine. The delegations of Panama, Costa Rica, and the Dominican Republic, on the basis of shared values and in respect for the United Nations Charter and for international law, condemn the use of force and the violation of the sovereignty and territorial integrity of Ukraine by the Russian Federation. The Alliance supports the Secretary-General of the United Nations, Mister Antonio Guterres, in his call for a cessation of hostilities and for moderation and reason to prevail, and that international humanitarian law be respected and civilians be protected. We reiterate that all efforts should be made in order to provide rapid, secure, and unhindered access for humanitarian assistance to those that require it in Ukraine in order to protect civilians, including humanitarian staff and those in vulnerable situations, particularly girls and boys. The serious situation caused by the displacement of thousands of Ukrainians looking for safe refuge in neighboring countries represents an additional challenge to the global complex crisis brought on by the pandemic. This is why the countries of Latin America, including members of the Alliance, have undertaken joint efforts in order to facilitate safe transit of our nationals crossing the Ukrainian border. Dialogue and negotiation accompanied by respect for the letter and the spirit of the United Nations Charter, the resolutions of the General Assembly, and international law constitute the only guarantee for a lasting solution to the conflict which today is afflicting Eastern Europe. Finally, we firmly call upon the parties to return to negotiations and diplomatic dialogue, and that peace be promoted and that there be respect for multilateralism. These must be at the core of action in this area. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Panama. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of China.
Mister President. The situation in Ukraine is changing sharply. China is closely following the developments. The situation has evolved to a point which China doesn't wish to see. It is not in the interest of any party. The immediate priority is for all parties to exercise restraint, prevent further worsening of the situation, while stepping up diplomatic efforts aiming for a political solution. China welcomes the start of direct talks between Russia and Ukraine. Ukraine should serve as a bridge of communication between East and West, rather than a frontline of major power rivalry. We call for efforts to create an atmosphere and conditions conducive to direct talks between the parties concerned, as this is the fundamental way to resolve the issue. All action taken by the UN and the relevant parties of the international community should prioritize regional peace and stability and universal security for all, and should help de-escalate tensions and facilitate a diplomatic settlement. China does not approve of any approach that may exacerbate tensions. China supports relevant UN agencies' continued work on humanitarian aid in Ukraine. We believe that the safety of civilian life and property and their humanitarian needs should be effectively guaranteed. Mister President, as a permanent member of the UN Security Council, China always conscientiously fulfills its responsibility of maintaining international peace and security. It is our consistent and unequivocal position that all countries' sovereignty and territory integrity should be respected, and the purposes and principles of the UN Charter be upheld. China will continue to play constructive role in the pursuit of peace. Mister President, the Cold War has long ended. The Cold War mentality based on block confrontation should be abandoned. Nothing can be gained from stirring up a new Cold War, but everyone will stand to lose. One country's security should not come at the expense of other countries' security. Still less can regional security be guaranteed by reinforcing or even expanding military blocks. China supports the EU, NATO, and Russia resuming dialogue. Bearing in mind the notion of indivisible security, properly addressing the legitimate security concerns of all parties, including Russia, striving to forge a balanced, effective, and sustainable European security mechanism so as to achieve lasting peace and stability for the European continent. Thank you, Mister President.
I thank the distinguished representative of China. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Bulgaria.
Thank you, Mister President. Mister President, distinguished delegates, Bulgaria aligns itself with the statement delivered on behalf of the European Union, and I would like to highlight a few points in my national capacity. Mister President, we have gathered here today under extraordinary circumstances, circumstances that defy reason but unfortunately are reality. And that reality is that the Russian Federation, a permanent member of the Security Council, is executing an act of aggression against Ukraine, a founding member of the UN. Bulgaria condemns in the strongest possible terms this provoked and unprovoked and unjustified military aggression, which is in gross violation of international law and of the principles of the UN Charter. The illegal military aggression of the Russian Federation against Ukraine not only undermines global security and stability, but also puts the international rules-based order in jeopardy. It is deplorable that the Russian Federation used its veto power to prevent the Security Council from exercising its primary responsibility for maintenance of international peace and security. However, the decision of the Security Council to urgently refer the matter to the General Assembly by calling an emergency special session demonstrates the resolve of the rest of the Council to do everything possible to address this serious act of aggression. The fact that for the first time in forty years, the Security Council takes such a decision speaks of the gravity of the situation. We commend the decision by the Security Council, and now it is up to all of us to live up to the responsibility to uphold the principles of the UN Charter and international law and to send a strong and unequivocal message by condemning the act of aggression and the illegal actions by the Kremlin. Bulgaria demands that the Russian Federation immediately cease its military actions, unconditionally withdraw all forces and military equipment from the entire territory of Ukraine, and fully respect Ukraine's territorial integrity, sovereignty, and independence within its internationally recognized borders. The use of force and coercion to change borders has no place in the 21st century. Tensions and conflicts should be resolved exclusively through dialogue and diplomacy. We strongly condemn the involvement of Belarus in this aggression, including providing its territory to be used as launching ground for the Russian aggression, and call on it to refrain from such action and to abide by its international obligations. The reports of civilian casualties, including of children, and the destructions of civilian infrastructure, including critical infrastructure, are deeply concerning. We are particularly outraged by the use of weapons that have indiscriminate effect in residential areas and against the civilian population. This is unacceptable and must stop immediately. We call on the Russian Federation to fully respect international humanitarian law and international human rights law and to allow safe and unhindered humanitarian access and assistance to all persons in need. The Russian Federation bears full responsibility for this aggression and all the destruction and loss of life, and the leadership of the Russian Federation should and will be held accountable in accordance with international law. Mister President, colleagues, it is our duty to do the right thing. We need to stand together against any act of aggression and against any violation of the UN Charter. We need to fiercely defend the principles of the UN Charter, international law, and the rules-based order because they are our only guarantee for peace. We cannot turn a blind eye when a blatant act of aggression is being executed against a sovereign, peace-loving nation. Today, it is against Ukraine; tomorrow, it could be against any one of us. In conclusion, I would like to reiterate Bulgaria's unwavering support for the sovereignty, independence, unity, and territorial integrity of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders. I would also like to thank the Ukrainian people for their extraordinary courage and resilience. You're not alone. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Bulgaria. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Italy.
Mister President, Mister Secretary-General, dear colleagues. Italy aligns itself with the statement of the European Union and wishes to add the following remarks in its national capacity. We do welcome the convening of this special emergency session. Following the impossibility for the Security Council to discharge its duties and adopt its own resolution on the matter due to the veto of the Russian Federation, the General Assembly had an obligation to make its voice heard in front of such a grave threat to international peace and security. We are thankful to those members of the Security Council that made this possible. Italy, together with its EU partners and allies, has made its position clear all along throughout this entire crisis with statements and consistent acts, standing firmly in support of the sovereignty and territorial integrity of Ukraine and in full solidarity with Ukrainian people. The unprovoked aggression decided by the Russian leadership is a blatant violation of international law and UN Charter, and as such, it has to be condemned in the strongest possible terms. The involvement of Belarus as a facilitator of the Russian aggression is also to be condemned. In close coordination with the EU partners and allies, we have implemented unprecedented economic and financial sanctions, including on Belarus. As already stated, further steps will have to be taken if the assault against Ukraine continues. We call upon the Russian Federation to stop immediately its action and to withdraw its military forces from the territory of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders extending to territorial waters. We urge the Russian Federation to respect the principles set in the UN Charter and in the Declaration of Friendly Relations, to abide by the Minsk Agreement, and to redirect urgently its action towards a peaceful solution. We trust that the General Assembly will, through the adoption of the tabled draft resolution, show cohesion and determination in dealing with a situation that is threatening the existence of a member state, causing a growing number of casualties, including civilians and... causing a growing number of casualties, including civilians and children, and ultimately is undermining the very essence of multilateral relations. Mr. President, Russia's actions are causing enormous human suffering and triggering a humanitarian disaster. We express our heartfelt solidarity with Ukraine and its people, and we mourn all the victims of this senseless war. Together with our partners and building on the support it has been provided since 2014, Italy is scaling up its financial and material support to strengthen the capabilities and resilience of Ukraine with an amount of around 110 million euros in aid credit and grants and additional contributions. We are also determined to provide increased humanitarian support to assist the people of Ukraine in these dramatic circumstances. In this context, international humanitarian law must be upheld. Safe and unhindered humanitarian access must be granted. The humanitarian staff must be protected. We welcome the convening of a meeting of the Security Council on the humanitarian dimension of this crisis later today, and we hope that the discussions will lead to the adoption of a concrete deliverable. Lastly, we acknowledge and support the statements of the Secretary-General in defense of the principles of the UN Charter and his action in support of the humanitarian needs in Ukraine. Italy will remain actively engaged in close coordination with its European partners and allies and reaching out to the broader UN membership in favor of the immediate halt of this aggression and in support of the urgent return to a peaceful path. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Italy. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Brazil.
Mr. President, Mr. Secretary-General, this is a defining moment for our organization and for the world. When the drafters of the Charter envisaged our collective security system back in 1945, they probably thought they had seen the worst in terms of tragedy and human suffering. If they were here today, they would doubt that assessment. We are under a swift escalation of tensions that could put all of humanity at risk, but we still have time to stop it. Brazil voted in favor of the draft resolution before the Security Council on the situation in Ukraine. We regret that the draft was not adopted, but firmly believe that the Security Council has not yet exhausted the instruments at its disposal to contribute to an negotiated and diplomatic solution towards peace. The urgency of the situation convinced us of the need to add the voice of the General Assembly to that of the Security Council in seeking solutions to the crisis in and around Ukraine. No one can deny the primary responsibility of the Security Council for the maintenance of international peace and security, nor the complementary role that this assembly can play to that end. Brazil welcomes the engagement of the Secretary-General in attempting to de-escalate the growing tensions. It also notes that Ukraine has initiated a case in the International Court of Justice based on the Genocide Convention. This is the moment for the principal organs of the United Nations to work together in pursuing one of the organization's main objectives, to save us from the scourge of war. For that, we need to be exceedingly cautious in moving forward, both in the General Assembly and elsewhere. We are currently witnessing a succession of events that, if not contained soon, could lead to a much broader confrontation. Everyone will suffer, not just those who are fighting. Those who have repeatedly pleaded for de-escalation will also bear the costs of the power play between NATO and Russia that we are currently witnessing. Over the last years, we have seen the progressive deterioration of the security situation and balance of power in Eastern Europe. The undermining of the Minsk Agreements by all parties and the discrediting of the security concerns voiced by Russia prepare the ground for the crisis we are all witnessing. Let me be clear, however. This situation in no way justifies the use of force against the territorial integrity and sovereignty of any member state. It is against the most basic norms and principles we all abide by and a clear breach of the UN Charter. Mr. President, it is of our collective interest to jointly do all we can to stop and reverse the belurghant actions before it is too late. Brazil reiterates its calls for an immediate ceasefire in Ukraine as well as with full respect for international humanitarian law. Equally important, we call all actors involved to reassess their decisions concerning the supply of weapons, the recourse to cyberattacks, and the application of selective sanctions, particularly those which could affect the global economy, including the critical area of food security. At this moment, we need constructive solutions, not actions that will only prolong hostilities and spread the conflict with rippling effects to the world's economy and security. As we speak, hundreds of thousands of civilians have already fled Ukraine. Many more will certainly follow, millions perhaps. The destruction of infrastructure has left people without electricity and water. Damage to essential infrastructure, interruption of basic services, including transportation and access to basic supplies, the danger to persons with disabilities, the elderly, and children, are causes of grave concern. There are pressing humanitarian needs for medical services, medicines, health equipment, shelter, and protection. The prospect of hostilities conducted in populated areas, compounded by the possible use of explosive weapons and direct participation of civilians, is also extremely worrisome. We urge all parties to avoid this scenario at all costs, bearing in mind the grave risks it poses to the civilian population. We call on all parties to adopt measures to ensure the protection of civilians and of critical civilian infrastructure, as well as to ensure unhindered humanitarian access to all those in need and the protection of refugees and displaced persons. We also reiterate our appeal to Ukraine and Russia to facilitate the withdrawal of all persons who want to leave the Ukrainian territory. Brazil expresses its gratitude to Poland, Slovakia, Hungary, Moldova, Romania, and others that are facilitating the exit of people fleeing the conflict, including Brazilians and Latin Americans. Let me also take this opportunity to express our solidarity to all families who have lost someone in this war, to all people left without home, water, and electricity, to those who are fleeing in fear, sometimes with nowhere to go, and to everyone who is now trapped in a conflict zone, desperately attempting to find refuge. I wish to commend all personnel that are now in Ukraine, trying to alleviate the suffering of the population. We know that you are doing your best in very challenging circumstances, and we know that more could be done to assist you in your efforts. Mr. President, few times has the General Assembly been convened under the Uniting for Peace Resolution. By meeting today, the international community shows its unwavering determination to reach a diplomatic solution to the ongoing conflict in Ukraine. A peaceful settlement of the crisis is not only the cessation of hostilities. It is about creating the conditions for a greater sense of security among all involved. It is about rebuilding bridges and regaining trust. And it is about respect, respect for each other's legitimate security concerns, for civilian lives, for all countries that do not want a war, for international law, and for the most basic principles that have guided this organization since its inception. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Brazil. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Canada.
Monsieur le Président.
Mr. President, Mr. Secretary-General, distinguished delegates. The hour is grave. The Russian Federation, a permanent member of the Security Council, has unleashed an illegal and unjustifiable war of aggression against the sovereignty, the territorial integrity, and the political independence of another member state of the United Nations, Ukraine. The actions of the Russian Federation constitute an egregious violation of the Charter of the United Nations and of its purposes and of its principles. The sovereign equality of all states, the right of all peoples to self-determination, the peaceful settlement of disputes, and the prohibition on the use of force. By unleashing this war, the Russian Federation seeks to destroy the freedom of a people and of a nation, a sovereign, independent, and integral nation. This is a war that is fueled by the desire of President Putin to restore imperialism and colonialism. These are the days against which the members of the United Nations have been fighting for generations. And the Russian Federation once again has prevented the Security Council from exercising its primary duty, that of protecting the peace, that of the maintenance of international peace and security. We are gathered here today because the Russian Federation has yet again illegitimately exercised its veto right, which we continue to view as illegitimate, as it has done on a number of other occasions. And the Russian Federation has now turned its threat to Ukraine, Europe, and the entire world with the threat of nuclear weapons use in a flagrant violation of the joint statement of the leaders of the five permanent members of the Security Council this past January.
Mr. President, it was in January of this year that members of the P5 agreed that a recourse to the nuclear option, to the nuclear threat, to the nuclear possibility was wrong. They admitted that no one could win this kind of confrontation. Just a few days later, President Putin announced that he was going to resort to this threat, directly contrary to what he had promised, signed, sealed, and delivered six weeks before. And so here we are, with a war that is a threat to each and every one of us. Through this resolution before us today, we as members of the United Nations have the chance to stand up, to stand up in defense of a free people and to rebuke the evil notion that might makes right. And now, we must all step up and stand up. Canada urges all member states to unequivocally condemn Russia's actions and to vote in favor of the resolution that is now before the Assembly. Russia has not been alone in undermining these foundational norms and rules, Mr. President. Belarus has also violated its obligations under the UN Charter and under international law. By allowing Russia to use its territory to invade and launch attacks against Ukraine, Belarus is aiding and abetting Russia's illegal war of aggression. Belarus's decision to send its force into Ukraine and to revoke its non-nuclear status are all completely unacceptable to us and completely incompatible with its obligations under the Charter of the United Nations. Mr. President, there must be accountability for these actions. As Russia has escalated its unjustifiable attack on Ukraine, its forces have encircled and shelled Ukrainian cities, targeting, killing, and maiming innocent Ukrainian civilians, children, women, and men. They are bombing civilian objects, hospitals, schools, kindergartens, apartments, and homes. They're looting and forcibly displacing civilians. Many hundreds of thousands have fled in freezing temperatures, seeking shelter across Ukraine's borders. There are credible reports that Russian forces are using prohibited weapons, including cluster bombs, and imposing siege warfare on Ukrainian cities. This is not news that comes in last week, news that comes in this morning. Pictures one can see visibly on social media as to what is taking place. Very different from the wars that have been waged in the past. We know what is happening in real time, and it is completely abhorrent. Let me be very clear, Mr. President. These are violations of international law, and they are acts that could amount to war crimes under international humanitarian law. Those acts flow directly from decisions that were made by President Putin and his inner circle, that were enabled by Belarus and their leaders. circle, that were enabled by Belarus and their leaders, and carried out by Russia's armed forces and its proxies. These crimes began with an idea. What was the idea? We don't have to invent it. All we have to do is read President Putin's speeches and watch his declarations. The idea that a group of people are lesser, unequal and unworthy, worthy of the protection of the law. The idea that a people in fact do not exist as a people, that they don't have a right to be themselves, that they don't have a right to their own nation, to their own country, that they have no right to the protection of the Charter. The way Vladimir Putin describes the Ukrainian nation and its supporters over many generations fits the description of the idea that I have described. And it's that idea that lies at the heart of the acts that follow, because actions don't come out of the blue, they don't come out of nothing. It all starts with an idea. And yet, with a terrible sense of irony, President Putin has perverted the very notion of genocide by alleging that genocide has been committed in Ukraine. I must stress, there has been no such finding substantiated by any UN or independent organization. And as my colleague from Brazil said, just speaking before me, if there are complaints, and obviously there have been in this chamber and in the Security Council, with respect to the treatment of the Russian minority in Ukraine, even if those complaints were fully justified, they are not an excuse for war and they are not an excuse for the aggression that we have seen. Ukraine has filed its own application under the Genocide Convention to the International Court of Justice. Canada takes the allegations filed by Ukraine with the greatest seriousness, as it does the decision of the prosecutor of the International Criminal Court to begin an investigation into potential crimes against humanity. These decisions are not taken lightly, and they have the most serious of consequences. But I want to stress, it is the International Court of Justice and the International Criminal Court that are the places for these allegations to be dealt with, not the battlefield and never by unilateral aggression. That's why we signed up to the Charter. We signed up to the Charter because we agreed that we would subject our disputes to processes created by us over many, many arduous years and debates what would be done in the event of a profound difference of opinion between states. We don't go to war, we go to the negotiating table, we go to court, we go to mediators. That's how we resolve disputes. The other way lies madness. Canada and the international community will spare no effort to ensure that violations of international law in Ukraine are in fact investigated, that evidence is gathered and that the perpetrators are held to account. We do so not only out of our conviction that the use of history, that the arc of history tends towards justice. We do so because what Ukrainians are being subjected to is horrific, and they deserve better and they deserve more. Mr. President, if I may, I'd like to speak directly to the brave people and the government of Ukraine. We are quite simply inspired by you. We are standing with you, and you are not alone. Our support for Ukraine, your country, for your Ukrainian democracy and for your right to choose your own future in Ukraine remains unwavering, steadfast and resolute. Canada will do everything in its power to help you as you hold strong and defend your homeland against this terrible Russian aggression. Together with our partners, we will ensure that President Putin and those who ordered, implemented and enabled this reckless war will continue to face significant costs and to be held accountable for their actions. Your struggle is now our struggle, and we are with you. Mr. President, if I could speak directly to the people of Russia, to the Russian protesters who are bravely demonstrating against the war, who have been met with brutal force and arbitrary arrests by riot police, to the thousands of Russian citizens who have written letters, had the courage to put their name on a letter to the President of Russia condemning this reckless decision, to all those Russians at home and abroad who are opposed to this senseless war, and you are in the millions. Canada and the world, we see you and we hear you. Your president, Vladimir Putin, has sorely miscalculated. He has ignored the democratic and law-abiding spirit of the Russian people. He has underestimated the brave Ukrainians defending their country from aggression, with whom you have no cause for war, no cause for hatred, no cause for violence. And he has severely misjudged the resolve of the world to stand against him. Whatever lies are spoken here today, trying to justify the unjustifiable or to explain the inexplicable, it is President Putin's war of choice that is making your lives much more difficult. But there is always time for de-escalation, there is always time for dialogue, and your president must choose this path. Should he not, I believe it will show just how much contempt he has for you and for the future of your country and the planet that we live on and share together. Mr. President, we should all say together, directly to President Putin, stop this war. Stop this war. Stop it before there is more death, more pain and more hardship. Stop the use of threats. Take your finger away from the nuclear button and never put it back for as long as you Come to grips with the reality of our time, as in more serious and rational moments you have done. Mr. President, it is never too late to stop. It's never too late to make a turn to diplomacy, to dialogue and to negotiation. The alternative cannot happen. So now it falls to all of us, as equal members of the United Nations, whose equality and sovereignty, as I've said before, is what we signed up to when we became members of this organization. We need to stand up to the principles, for the principles of the Charter, for the purposes of the Charter, and to heal the hurt and pain that has been caused by this terrible war of aggression. This responsibility belongs to us and to no others. We sit here, we have to make decisions, we have to take every step we can, the human footsteps, to peace, to reconciliation and to justice. That is now our job in the General Assembly, and we must seize this moment, this moment of accountability, this moment of justice, this moment of democracy, we must seize it together. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Canada, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Singapore.
We are meeting today in a historic emergency special session because the UN Security Council was unfortunately unable to discharge its primary responsibility for the maintenance of international peace and security as a result of the veto cast by the Russian Federation, which is regrettable. We welcome the convening of this emergency special session as it allows all countries, especially the small countries, to raise their voice, to state their views and to register their concerns in this universal organ of the United Nations. Mr. President, Singapore has always taken a consistent position on the sovereignty, independence and territorial integrity of all countries. Singapore is a staunch supporter of the rules-based multilateral system and of the United Nations. The unprovoked invasion of Ukraine by the Russian Federation is a clear and gross violation of the fundamental norms and of the fundamental norms of international law and of the UN Charter. The UN Charter prohibits the use of force and acts of aggression against another sovereign This is a matter of principle for all small states and a matter of fundamental importance to all members of the General Assembly. For a tiny city-state like Singapore, this is an existential issue. A world order where might is right, or the strong do what they can and the weak suffer what they must, will be profoundly inimical to the security and survival of small states. We cannot accept one country attacking another without justification, arguing that its independence was the result of, and I quote, "historical errors and crazy decisions," unquote. We simply cannot accept such an argument. Such an argument and rationale would go against the internationally recognized legitimacy and territorial integrity of many countries, including Singapore. This is why Singapore condemns, in the strongest terms possible, any unprovoked invasion of a sovereign country under any pretext. We deplore the Russian Federation's special military operation against Ukraine, both its operation in the Donbass region and the broader land, air and sea attacks across Ukraine, including on Kyiv, the capital city. We also note with great sadness and regret reports of the growing number of casualties and the loss of many innocent lives as a result of this unjustified attack and act of war. We have taken note of the UN Humanitarian and Emergency Relief Coordinators' comments about the scale of the humanitarian assistance required to help those affected, and we call for safe and unhindered access for humanitarian assistance to Ukraine and all those in need. Mr. President, we reiterate that the sovereignty, political independence and territorial integrity of all countries, including Ukraine, must be respected within its internationally recognized borders. The Secretary-General of the United Nations has stated that he considers the actions of the Russian Federation to be a violation of the territorial integrity and sovereignty of Ukraine and inconsistent with the principles of the Charter of the United Nations. We agree with the Secretary-General entirely. Let me repeat, we agree with the Secretary-General entirely, and we support his call for the Russian Federation to withdraw all its troops from the territory of Ukraine and for the responsible actors to immediately cease all hostilities and prioritize diplomacy to address all issues peacefully in accordance with the UN Charter and international law. We also support the good offices of the UN Secretary-General to be deployed in any way possible to facilitate diplomatic contacts and negotiations. Mr. President, let me conclude by saying that the world is watching us as we meet today in the General Assembly. As members of the General Assembly, we have to act swiftly, firmly and with unity of purpose. Singapore is one of the main co-sponsors of the draft resolution that has been tabled for adoption in this General Assembly. Singapore will not hesitate to vote yes on this draft resolution. Singapore will always vote to uphold the principles of the UN Charter and to uphold international law. And I would like to urge all members of the General Assembly to vote yes for this resolution. And distinguished delegates, this resolution is not about taking sides, it is about upholding international law and the principles of the UN Charter. The United Nations, distinguished delegates, is being tested today. It is important that all countries, especially the small states, send a clear signal that we are united for peace and we are united to defend the principles of the Charter and that we are united to uphold international law. I thank you for your attention.
I thank the distinguished representative of Singapore. We have heard the last speaker in the debate on this item for this meeting. We shall hear the remaining speakers this afternoon. I would like to inform members that at 3:00 PM today, the General Assembly will first hold the 60th plenary meeting of the 76th regular session, as announced in the Journal. This will be followed by the second plenary meeting of the 11th emergency special session, at which the debate on Agenda Item 5 will continue. The General Assembly has thus concluded this stage of its consideration of Agenda Item 5. The meeting is adjourned.